A make a motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Do you provide to apply to leave? I pledge allegiance.
To the land, the United States of America.
The Constitution.
For which it stands, one nation, under God, with the love of God.
Thank you. Yes. Okay. So, I'm gonna turn it over to Rich.
Thank you. We added a special acknowledgement tonight. I'll read item number four and just get into a little more detail in a moment. Please, the staff of our wonderful school district, we are acknowledging you. The school nurses, administration, instructional and non-instructional unit members. I want to point out to especially the nurses and the custodians and round phones. We're keeping our buildings safe. One of the initiatives the county placed on the school district was for us to verify our asymptomatic community spread among students and staff. And we partnered with the county and our nursing staff did a wonderful job that way. So far, we have tested 290 students and staff. That's elementary school, middle school, and high school. Out of the 290 tests given, there were zero positive cases. Hence, the acknowledgement and just with a special draw. You know, in one way, I was gonna highlight the nurses on saying, wait a minute. This has been a collaborative effort with everyone. And I really, from the bottom of my heart, I just want to thank everybody. People have really been going an extra mile. And I know the board feels the same way in terms of appreciation for what's going on. So, just that special acknowledgement. Just to drill down a little bit, at the elementary school. Let me get my paper. Since the beginning of the school year, we had 17 positive cases in the elementary school. Number of students who are currently positive are one. And number of students currently quarantined are 12. Middle school, only four cases since the beginning of, it was March 13th, I remember the date well. Only one positive case. Some students are quarantined now because of travel, only five. High school, 31 total confirmed positive cases. 16 students are currently quarantined. There are only four active cases at the high school. So, I just would like to, especially at this point, thank the nursing staff because they basically have been doing the contact tracing. I will be issuing a memo coming out hopefully tomorrow, if not the next day. We're very concerned at this point. We just need a partnership again with the community. Social gatherings in families and travel are two areas of concern. And we will take a strong stance again in terms of if we do find out about travel, it will be a 14-day quarantine. The reason for that is, is that many of our younger students have a better immune system. And if they are positive, a lot of times, it doesn't show up. We've had quite a few cases that the positivity hasn't shown up until day 10, 11, or 12. So, we want to make sure everybody stays safe. So, I just want to get that message out sooner. Please, be very careful. Take seriously CDC and their issuance and guidance. And please just take a special precaution, especially with our youngsters coming back from colleges. We know there are gonna be social gatherings. Please do the best to limit those types of situations. So, I just wanted to get that word out publicly, so.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
And I want to say, it's harder to learn with this virus. It's harder to be a teacher, to do your job the way you want to do it. It's much, much harder because of this virus. To be a parent, to be a student, to be a nurse, to be a custodian. In order to do your job, it's hard. And again, we're very appreciative of the efforts made. And we know that. And God help us with this vaccine coming and maybe we can get back to being more normal. And maybe we get back to being a better school. I just hope.
I hope so. I'd just like to make one other recognition too. With the 207 students and staff members that were tested at John Marshall. The nurses who came from the county, I think there are probably about 15 county employees. Villa Specialties provided lunch that day. Lunch and a nice dessert for all the nurses that came out with the county. So, thank you to Villa Specialties for giving us, you are generous. We really appreciate that.
Very nice. And thanks to the county for coming out to test. Because I think we were one of the first schools, at least out of East End, that did get tested.
Yeah.
So, thanks to them too for that.
Yes.
And the families that agreed to let their kids get tested. Use the schools?
Use of the schools. If you want, we'd like to start. James, why don't we start with high school?
Sure, as soon as I can figure out where my mute button is. First, I just want to thank Rich because I think that was really important that the teachers and the staff were acknowledged. I think they really could benefit from that kind of pick-me-up from the board because they've really been putting a lot of work in. You know, overall, things are going well and we kind of went over our COVID rate, you know, which it is what it is. And we hope that, you know, everyone who goes away does quarantine. Ideally, they won't go away. A more positive note, our program of study is going to be going up on the internet very shortly. We will have a program of study night on the other side of Christmas break. We're looking at January 6th and 7th. That would be virtual. That would be for the upperclassmen. Our course selection day would be on the 13th and 14th. And then I'm looking at an eighth grade planning night that would be on the 20th and 21st. For each one of those, gonna have an English day and a Spanish-speaking day so we could reach out to, you know, the communities that we have here. Otherwise, you know, it's definitely been a grind. There's no doubt about it. You know, I sent some surveys out, you know, to the staff and to the teachers. Both parties are definitely stressed. There is no doubt about that. I think we could really benefit from this Christmas break to give us just a little bit of air. I've kind of put something out today to kind of soften up a little bit of our homework policies because I think at some point, not at some point, I think we're reaching a point, you know, with our students in terms of their mental health, you know, where we really need to take a close look and, you know, kind of slow the engine down because it's tough. And not just the students, but also the teachers as well. So, I'm hoping softening up the homework expectations, you know, across the board might help in that regard for everyone involved so we can really focus in on learning and not so much grades. Other than that, you know, it's status quo. Everyone's kind of hanging in and pitching in and working really hard. I couldn't be prouder of my students and of my staff.
Thank you, James. Charlie?
Yeah? Thank you.
Charlie?
Last time I talked. Yeah?
I'm sorry, can you just hang on one second? JP, can I just do a test of the phones really quick? Okay.
JP, this is Matt, can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Perfect, thank you. You may continue now. Sorry about that, Charlie, thank you.
No problem, thanks, Matt. So, last time I talked about normalcy and routine and all the activities that we have been doing this past, at the end of November and December. So, I'm not gonna repeat those. But what I will say is that we've firmed up our plans for our traditional holiday activities, which include specifically our Jingle Bell Run, which is now a walk, and our Dreason's Donuts and Hot Cocoa. And that will take place for each cohort this week on Thursday and Friday and then for the following cohort next week. Although, who knows now with what's in the forecast for Thursday as potentially our first snow, we may not be able to do our walk. But I spoke with Lee Bryant and Barbara Tracy today and we can, if necessary, move that to Friday. And if we really get walloped, well, then we'll figure out, you know, what we're gonna do. I can speak to our PTA leadership. And we could always set up a table on Friday outside of school, even if we're closed, and have people swing by if they wish and pick up a donut. Or if that doesn't work, we'll figure out something else. We've certainly bobbed and weaved a lot with COVID and we have a lot of practice. So, however it will happen, it will happen in some form or fashion. And then hopefully, we'll be back into, you know, the routine next week. But, you know, as James said, I'm really pleased, like the board is and like Rich is and Adam is, with everyone's spirit and their resolve and their energy. And I think, you know, we are also looking forward to some holiday break time. And then back and ready to go in January 2021. I hope it's a much better year.
Great, Charlie, thank you.
Sure.
Karen?
Yeah, Charlie agreed on that to 2021. I'd like to start by thanking our grounds crew. You know, we've been talking for a little while about taking down the tents that are, that have been on the grounds at John Marshall. And they worked very hard to get those tents down before the potential storm that's coming later in the week. And I know they're working on storing them properly so that we'll be able to put them back up and put them to good use in the spring. So, a shout-out to Dave and the grounds crew for the work that they did in taking care of those tents. They've really been a huge help to us, allowing our students to be outside in somewhat inclement weather. And in the fall, I'm sure there were days where it provided much-needed shade. I thought I'd also share with everybody, we put what students at John Marshall learned this year about voting to good use. We created a survey for our classrooms to vote on our spirit days next week. So, Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesday of next week is Spirit Week. And each homeroom got to vote on their choices of what they wanted the theme to be for those three days. So, that was pretty exciting for our students to, you know, put the voting process into action in their classrooms. And lastly, I think everybody knows that we host at John Marshall a bi-weekly all-school meeting. And this year, those meetings are virtual. And in addition to Friday's all-school meeting, we'll be hosting a very special holiday Monday all-school meeting virtually. So, look out for that. I think students are gonna get to see some of their favorite teachers, you know, putting on some holiday cheer and, you know, celebrating each other and the upcoming break, the holiday break.
Great, Karen, thank you so much. Thank you. Is Joe Boss, I don't see Joe Boss.
He's there.
Oh, I'm sorry, Joe.
Here.
Joe, give us the sports update, please.
Sure, can you hear me?
Yep. Good to hear.
Okay, terrific, great, good to see everybody. Well, this week, the governor's office sent out a pause, a continued pause for the high-risk sports of basketball and wrestling and volleyball. Initially, we had gotten word that they were canceled altogether, but that's not accurate. What is accurate is they're still on pause and under review. So, hopefully, we'll get word sometime after the holidays, what direction we go with them. And we'll figure that out. I met with Rich and Adam today to go over many of the protocols that are in place from the task force and the, that we had at Section 11 and a playbook we created to how to open up sports safely. But right now, they're on pause. The low-risk sports of bowling, winter track, and swimming are on starting January 4th. Just, I've been sending out signup sheets for parents to sign up their kids or kids to sign up on a Google Messenger. So, we're underway doing that. And we have, I've met with the bowling alley to make sure we can meet all their protocols and what we need to do on our end to keep our kids safe, which I reviewed with Adam and Rich today. I'm feeling really confident that we can pull it off and make it work because the bowling alleys all have plexiglass in between the lanes. Kids aren't switching. So, when we get there with the five kids that are gonna bowl, they'll be contained into their lanes without switching or mingling with the other students in the other schools. We can move forward and make this work. Winter track is going to be outside only. So, in the signup sheet, when I have my parents' meeting, just to let everyone know, if you sign up for winter track, it is outdoor winter track. That means no inside access, no running in the hallways, no weight room. So, and no coming into the building, it's cold. We'll go by the wind chill factors that we have from the state. They give us guideline where we can stay outside or not. But that's the way we're gonna go about winter track. As far as swimming, the YMCA has all protocols that we signed a contract with them when we were going to practice in there. They're the same, we can meet all those protocols, plus the additional ones that we have in our district that we need to do for our kids. So, I feel good about that. All the meets for track are gonna be on the weekend, so it's gonna eliminate our bus issue. We can send, set two buses to accommodate all the kids on a Saturday, which will work out instead of having to trim that squad a little bit because it takes the pressure off of buses during the week. So, after going through everything and sharing it, Rich and Adam, I really felt comfortable with going forward. And I wanted to get your input or your thoughts from the board. I know I have an athletic committee meeting coming up and I'll go through everything with you folks again.
Thank you, Joe.
You're welcome.
Yes, Joe did a really great job organizing and I think we're in really good shape. I think part of our feeling is that actually when the kids are with us, they're actually in a safer environment. So, with these limited amount of sports starting, I think we're gonna be able to keep our kids safe and give them an activity that's worth while.
Thank you.
I think we're okay, anybody, any other?
That's all it is.
Yeah. I think you're okay.
Okay.
Okay. Nobody else, everybody's good, okay? I think we're good, I think we can move on, thank you. Matt, do we have anybody on the line for a public comment?
You have zero callers, JP, thank you.
So, who wants to consent agenda? Have a motion to accept the consent agenda?
My question.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Number eight, superintendent's report recommendations. Beginning of item number one, recommended the board approve the following resolution resolved that Nicole DeRosa Patton is upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools appointed to a music teacher position as a lead replacement commencing December 16th, 2020, through honorable March 26th, 2021, and annual salary, base salary of $56,039. Do you have a motion? I meditate.
Second.
Okay, discussion is pretty much self-explanatory. Lead replacement for two music, yeah. It works out where we did not use one lead replacement teacher for two teachers. We'll be going out eternity and maternity leave. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Number two, recommended the board approve the following resolution. Do you hear my resolve that the Board of Education accept the letter of resignation for the purposes of retirement from Joanne Gerler for her position as elementary school teacher effective at the close of business day on January 29th, 2021? Do you have a motion?
Make a motion.
Second?
Second.
Discussion, congratulations.
Congratulations.
How long is, she's gotta be here 30 years?
Yes, in fact, she just made.
I don't want to make her old.
She just made 30 years, actually, yeah.
And I just want to personally, you know, with all of these teachers, I'm always so reflective when these teachers retire, particularly when my kids have had them because you sort of track your kids' lives and think about that and know how these teachers touch our kids' lives. And my son had Mrs. Gerler back in 2009 and he's gonna be graduating soon. So, again, thank you and wishing you health and thank you for everything that you've done for the district.
I second that. How much more to really add? I really have to feel the same way. My son had joined as well and it was a great experience. And we only, places are, you have as good.
That's my kid, my son's first day at school with Mrs. Gerler, right there.
That was actually one of my favorite classrooms to visit going into Joanne Gerler. And Laura Rosna is also on team teaching. It was just such a warm and welcoming area. And they got the idea that you're creating the destiny of these kids.
Right.
They understood the importance of their educational experience. But one thing you do, you always remember your kid who are teacher.
Yeah.
True.
Absolutely, we didn't have pre-K back in the day. So, this was the very first line kids were introduced to school. So.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Uh, let's see. Number four. I'm sorry, cross it out before I have to. So, let's see. Recommend the board approve the following resolution. Do you hear my resolve that Dr. Michael Schwartz be appointed to serve the medical, I'm sorry, appointed to serve as medical inspector for the Board of Education of the East Hampton University School District pursuant to education law section 913. And we have further resolve that pursuant to section 913 of the education law, the individual referred to in confidential attachment one is directed to report to the medical examination in order to determine the capacity of such person to perform his or her duties as an employee of the East Hampton University School District. The said medical examination is to be before Dr. Schwartz at his office located at 150 Broad Hollow Road, Melville, New York, 11747 on December 17th, 2020, and such other further times as shall be directed by Dr. Schwartz to complete the set evaluation. And is hereby further resolved that said individual is directed to produce at said medical examination any and all psychiatric medical records related to the present state of his or her health and to execute authorization for release of such records to Dr. Schwartz for purposes of the examination. Do you have a motion? I meditate.
Second.
Number seven, second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Number four, recommend that the board approve the following appointments for the 2020-21 school year. That begins with John Marshall, lunch monitor, down to middle school volunteer tutor Nancy Niger. Do you have a motion?
My question.
I second it.
Any discussion? Thank you to the volunteers and people heading forward. Much appreciated. Much appreciated, Nancy Niger. Yeah, that's very nice. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Number five. Recommend the board approve the following resolution resolved that the board approve the shared sports agreement for the Boys Lacrosse and the Junior High School Junior varsity and varsity levels between East Hampton University School District and designated co-hosting districts and each of the following school districts for the 2020-21 school year in accordance with the term of division set sport and said shared sports agreement. At Southampton, Sag Harbor, Bridgehampton, and the Broad School. Do you have a motion?
My question.
Second.
Any discussion? You know, you've got this a lot.
Yeah.
Yeah, nothing new. Nothing new. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Number six, now I've been waiting for this, I'm gonna say, what, seven years? It's been seven, it's been seven. So, number six, recommend that the board approve the following bids for the school district's new East Hampton Bus Garage as follows. And it begins with unit price number one, contract number one, down to contract number four, unit price number three. The total bid plus all accepted organs is $3,731,281, which is under budget, I may say, but it is fortunate, thank goodness. Do you have a motion?
I make a motion.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? Mike, Mike was, I think, on the call with us. Yep, hi, Mike, if you could give some insight, please.
Sure, so, we opened bids on the fourth. We've spoken with all of the apparent low bidders, interviewed everyone. As you're aware, we had some concerns with some of the submittals. We reviewed all of that. I think we're satisfied. All of the contractors are good contractors, most of which have done work in the district before with success. We're, you know, reasonably under budget, so that's great news. And we are hoping to break ground right after the new year.
Thank you, Mike, I know it's been a long, a long road. Yeah, let's hope that the snowstorm goes away and it doesn't get real cold and we can keep going. But thank you for attending tonight. And does anybody in the board have a question for Mike? Are we good?
Yes.
Aye.
Any opposed? Terrific, thank you. Mike, you want to let go?
Yeah.
Well, we might, based on this, I don't know, but we might get questions later. Yeah, it's gonna be quick, Mike, so if you won't mind hanging out just for a few minutes.
I don't mind at all.
Thank you. And just to add to that discussion too, I'd be happy to note that Johnson Controls are getting ready to work on the Soul of Panama. Oh, great, good. Sometime all the way.
I'll believe that when I see it.
Yeah, it's gotta be like six years.
Yeah, no, that's nine, hold on. I've been here nine years and I think it was the second year we started this discussion.
Were they planning on over vacation? Is that what they were saying?
Correct. They're gonna drop off some of their equipment over the holiday break.
Great. Good? Robert?
Yes.
Well, we're almost there before COVID hits.
Yeah, exactly.
So, listen to Tabby.
Hey, Candy, it's Carrie, just letting you know that it's a problem with, we're working on it. So, hopefully you get the message, just wanted to let you know. Thanks, bye.
Actually, can she hear us?
There you go. All right. Number seven, recommend the board approve the following budget transfers for as due to transfer of building staff the 2020-21 school year to date. It's payroll, these are all payroll codes. From A2820.1005.14 to A2110.1400.14. Top amount was $77,472. Bottom amount was $10238.46. Do you have a motion? I meditate. Second? Discussion, do you have anything to add? It's all moving from one bill to another. It's not extra money, it's somebody moved from one bill to another bill. The payroll code has followed that.
All the transfers, yeah?
Yeah, that's all this is about.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Number eight, recommend the board approve the following budget transfers for the 2020-21 school year to date and begins with A9040.8000.04. The amount is $137. We have, we have $137,000, small group. Increase, this is the increase in unemployment due to additional unanticipated claims. Do you have a motion?
My question.
Second.
Discussion, do you want to add anything to this?
Just saying, just increasing.
Yeah, we don't make that number, it's a number that's given to us, correct?
It's just our contribution increase?
Correct, we're just paying other costs a few months because of COVID.
Yeah, it's a COVID-related item as well.
Yeah, we haven't laid anybody off, so.
Yeah? No.
So, we're, it's like, see for information on this when we get a chance.
I'm sure.
All, we are, all in favor? Any opposed? And then the last page is just calendars, the December 2020 calendar with committees. December 16th is personnel and athletics. And then you go to the January, January 14th, facilities academic policy committee. And January 27th, which is personnel committee, athletic committee. I'd just like to, on that note, the 16th, the personnel committee, there's no really agenda items, so we'll be able to cancel that meeting for tomorrow. Okay, the athletic committee meeting is on? Athletic is on.
For tomorrow at 1:00, Joe?
It's canceled?
No, personnel is canceled, athletics on.
Cancelled.
Okay, athletic is at 2:00, right?
It's at 2:00 o'clock and it's Zoom, I sent a link out.
Okay, sorry.
No problem.
You got, oh, this is, we did the COVID-19, I think, so. We did that already, correct. This is the January 5th meeting, which if you remember, we weren't gonna have this meeting or not. We had a few things come up, plus we wanted to give the COVID numbers kind of set phase and just remind everybody of our thoughts that have been going forward for, you know, the quarantine and just kind of report that. There were a few agenda items we had to deal with. Bids were important to get that squared away. So, with that, we may, unless something comes up, I think we're gonna cancel the January 5th meeting unless we have something that comes up, which if we do, we'll let everyone know. Yeah, but right now, we're not.
Yeah, but right now we're, we're not planning to meet in the fifth. Not, not planning, correct?
Everybody else have a comment to that?
And and just um, for new business too, JP, also, um, Keith, if you can just give us an update, of course, we did change on our snow removal companies this year, so Keith has been on the phone, I know, and just give an update for that, please.
Sure, so uh, B and B Maintenance is our new company. Uh, I spoke with uh Bob, who's running the company, uh, they're going to bring out their equipment tomorrow.
Okay.
All right, they're going to store some of it, as we discussed, back by Dave. Um, and I have them on a text stream with myself, Dave runs the facilities and Tom. So we'll all be in constant communication for Thursday's events.
This will be the, the day here, I suppose.
Maybe.
Maybe, maybe not, maybe it'll be rain.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's looks like it's moving a little further north, so that's good news.
Have we had the same company for a while now?
That was the first year we had history for Mary and Ann, so they lost a bit.
Yeah, it's just a function of the bid.
Um, Matt, do we have anybody on the phone for public comment?
You have zero callers, JP, thank you.
Even better, all right. Well, before we go, just wish everybody a happy holiday and um, you know.
Yes, everyone.
Stay safe. Stay safe, stay home if you can, do all those things that.
Stay away from people.
Yeah, stay away from people, no human contact.
JP and the school board, I just wanted to say on behalf of LTV, Merry Christmas and Happy New Year.
Thank you.
Matt, thank you for helping us get all our information to the public. Absolutely, absolutely.
You're more than welcome.
Even, I think we're in the middle of a happy holiday as well, and thank you, guys. And do you have a motion to report, adjourn?
Make a motion.
Second?
Second.
Got it, right? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.